Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting this January 24th, 2023. Thank you all for being here today. I don't see a lot of public participants here right now, but let's move on. So we're going to begin with communications to the City Commission. There was one communication from the Sustainability Advisory Board. It's quite a lengthy communication, and a lot of good points were made in the request. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what happened at the meeting and give us the salient points of the recommendations that they're making?
Absolutely. Glenn Hadwin, Sustainability Manager. At the October 24th Sustainability Advisory Board meeting, they received a communication on the proposed revisions to the city's requirements for tidal barriers or seawalls. And Broward County has passed a requirement that the minimum height be five feet NAVD, a new height slightly higher because they've worked with the Army Corps of Engineers and looking at more long-range planning. So basically, in 2016, the city revised its seawall ordinance, it set a minimum height, and the county developed this plan, this revision based in part on the cities, but they looked at a longer range model and working with the Army Corps of Engineers, they set a new standard, and cities are required to comply with this that are tidally influenced. So this would bring us into compliance with that and increase the resilience of the city. And so the SAB heard the presentation on that, and therefore, they recommend to the Commission that tonight, when you hear the first reading of the tidal barrier ordinance, that you approve it.
So is the county requirement consistent with the city's requirement? Is there conflict?
It's more stringent.
It's more stringent?
Yes, they looked at a longer range timeframe in their planning, and in order to establish that the, that our seawalls would look, I believe it's in more looking at a 50-year time range that...
I think Mr. Jardoe has a less, a more pessimistic outlook.
Yes, so they're trying to just give us longer range performance there.
So are we held to that requirement, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Actually, City Attorney? Are we held to their, if we set a certain seawall height and they say, well, it has to be taller, are we held to that standard? What is the deal there?
We are. The Broward County Charter provides them with land use preemption over cities. So they've adopted this policy as part of their comprehensive plan, requiring the cities to adopt a ordinance that's consistent with their model ordinance that their plan requires them to adopt within their code of ordinances.
So Dr. Gasman, we have established a certain height. How does their limitation change our limitation?
Dr. Nancy Gasman, Assistant Public Works Director. Our current ordinance allows for a minimum elevation for all new seawalls at 3.9 feet NAVD.
Right.
The new requirement under the county's template ordinance is five feet NAVD, so it's 1.1 foot higher for all new seawalls or seawalls that have to come into compliance because of disrepair or because they're allowing tidal flows over the wall.
All right, so you said ours is 2.9?
3.9.
3.9, and theirs is five?
Five.
So Jennifer Jardoe is, she's a little bit more pessimistic, or are they taking it for a longer term?
Now, when we first brought the seawall ordinance to the public back in 2016, our original request was to set a minimum height elevation of 4.7.
Okay.
But because our existing maximum elevation for our seawalls in the ordinance at that time was 3.9, over time, with additional public feedback, the compromise to move this forward was to change our current maximum in the standard to the current minimum. So we went from you can't build it over 3.9 to you must build it to 3.9. But the original proposal by staff was to set that minimum elevation of 4.7, and so...
So now, so the county, is this a maximum with the county or a minimum?
Minimum.
So a person could go seven feet tall?
So the way that we've written this ordinance with feedback from a number of different boards is that the minimum you can build is to five, but based on the way our previous, our current ordinance was written, people could build much higher if their base flood elevation was high enough, because we don't want people building a seawall that will create rainfall to come into their homes. So they don't want the seawall higher than the finished floor. But what was happening was that people were building substantially higher as they raised their finished floor elevations to the new FEMA standards. And so we got some feedback after the Marine Advisory Board and had some internal discussions. And so the current, the way the ordinance is currently written is that you can build your new seawall between a minimum of five, but not more than six.
So this concerns me because a person can go up to six and their neighbor could be a three, and they're going to suffer the runoff and all the flooding that's going to take place. A person who's building a new home can raise the entire lot, so they're not going to suffer flooding into their home.
So we see that now, regardless of where those homes are built, that in order to do appropriate floodplain management, we have to look very carefully at as homes are being required to be built higher and how they have an impact on their neighbors, which may not be up to the current standard. And so current homes, when they're built, they're retired to, they're required to retain a certain amount of stormwater on their property. So they can't end up flooding out their neighbors because of that. And the seawall ordinance is similar, is that if they build a new seawall that's substantially higher than their neighbors, they can't have an impact on their neighbors in terms of the way that that structure is built, so it can't impact the enjoyment of the property next to them.
So are we going to, are we going to see a change in our ordinance then with regard to the minimum height for the seawall? Or is that something that's just automatic that's taken into consideration when someone applies for a seawall replacement?
When someone, correct. So when a seawall is replaced, when a seawall is found or cited to be in substantial disrepair, or if that seawall is causing tidal flows over that property and into the public right-of-way or is impacting an adjacent neighbor, those are the times when a new seawall would be, a new tidal barrier would be required and it would have to come up to the minimum standard.
Okay. Any questions of our city staff?
Mayor, the only comment I would like to make, and thank you, Dr. Gasman, for participating at my meeting last night, is just to make sure that we communicate this with folks. Obviously, there's a lot of older homes in District One, in Coral Regiles, Imperial Point, and so forth, that are going to be impacted by the requirement that if you have to repair more than 50% of the linear feet of your seawall, that you're now going to be required to bring it up to code. I know I've experienced that myself at a property I was looking at. The cost was prohibitive, and not everybody is aware of that. So I know it's, I know it's part of the ordinance. It's been there all along, but now we're raising the height an additional foot. And I know when we looked at this a couple of years ago, it was $1,000 a linear foot to raise your seawall. So if you've got 100 foot of seawall and you've got a crack that runs 60 feet, you want to repair that, you're now repairing the entire wall and bringing the entirety of the wall up to the new code. And I think that's catching people by surprise because when I've talked to folks that do these repairs, when I've talked to the realtors that are selling these houses, they were not aware of these requirements. In fact, I was told I didn't have to do it specifically. So again, I think a communication campaign would be well advised. Thank you.
Did you want to add anything, Commissioner?
No, thank you for the information.
All right, so, all right, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Business One, Goal Setting for Charter Revision Board. We had one person who signed up to speak on that, Mr. Brown. Bill, do you want to come up?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, Bill Brown, President of Central Beach Alliance. However, today I'm coming as a private residence here at Fort Lauderdale before you can speak. However, today I'm coming as a private residence here at Fort Lauderdale before you speak as you do some goal-setting. As I personally know each and every member of this commission, and I know your standards of transparency and ethics while serving on this commission, and that's what I'm going to talk about as this charter, the goals of the Charter Review. And in talking with many residents, not only of the beach area but throughout the city as a whole, and officers of their neighborhoods' associations, they feel this is a very important discussion as well, and that is members that sit on boards and commissions. If they're a lobbyist, they should not be allowed to sit on board in commissions and/or a Charter Review, because if they're registered with the city and doing business with the city, therefore, they bring with them, if they're a lobbyist, their own biased opinions on making decisions or recommendations before this commission. I first thought maybe it should be written in the Charter that a lobbyist cannot serve on a board of commission, but then after further discussion with some other people, it might be a resolution that's drafted by this commission as we go forward. You know, as you look at lobbyists, it'd be like putting a lobbyist, a land-use lobbyist, on planning and zoning. That is, should not be the case. They have to commit them to neutral and objective minds when they start making decisions what's in the best interest of the city and the residents of the city. So I'm here today to ask you to look at the possibility of either having it put in the Charter, which I don't know if that is a legal place for it to be, or it be a resolution, but we should bar lobbyists who are registered with the city of Fort Lauderdale serving on boards and commissions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Mayor, I wanted to ask a question of the City Attorney, just to follow up what Mr. Brown just said. So, Mr. City Attorney, do we have any restrictions in terms of like a vendor who does business with the city or in terms of them serving on boards and committees? Is there any restriction like that in any of our ordinances?
No, the only restriction that you have, excuse me, in our code of ordinances with regards to the appointment of advisory board members and committee members is with regards to residency.
I'm sorry, with residency?
Residency.
That's the only requirement.
Only restriction, and then the individual boards may have additional categories of requirements, like certain professions, that are needed to meet certain categories to be appointed to a board, but those are the only restrictions that we have.
So in other words, a vendor, anyone that does business with the city, is able to serve on a board or committee?
Not quite. So state law, we have a, the Code of Ethics has a restriction with regards to doing business with one's own entity, which would be a restriction, but that can be waived by the governing body of the municipality.
So a vendor can, someone that does business with the city can serve on a board and committee if the commission waives that, but you're saying it's not a restriction or it is a restriction, or it's a state restriction?
It's a state restriction. It's not in our code of ordinance.
So the city would have to actually be proactive in doing something to waive that state restriction of someone doing business? Now, Mr. Brown mentioned a lobbyist as someone that does business with the city, but I'm not sure if that's necessarily accurate or 100% true. Is a lobbyist considered someone who does business with the city?
Under the Code of Ordinances, lobbyist is defined differently than a vendor is.
What about according to the state?
According to the state, yes.
According to the state, lobbyist is not the same as a vendor?
That's correct.
Okay.
But is there a provision regarding lobbyists and their ability to serve on advisory boards?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
If I can just add a thought to that, too, you know, if you're going to follow that to its logical conclusion, that would also exclude anybody that does any business whatsoever with the city, any entity that does business with the city, any not-for-profit that gets money from the city, anybody who's related to somebody that works for a not-for-profit that gets money from the city. So I mean, if we're going to go down that path, I think it becomes a much larger, more encompassing question. So I'll give you an example. My appointee that I have in mind for the Charter Revision Board works for Wyserota. Wyserota has done work for the city. That would preclude him, even though he's written many of the charters in Broward County, from being able to participate. So I would not be supportive of this.
Well, while it does raise a larger question, maybe the larger question should be asked. I mean, maybe we should be more restrictive, not just limited to vendors and lobbyists, but also to anybody that receives remuneration from the city, either directly or indirectly.
That includes Broward Health, United Way, Riverwalk Trust.
I really haven't had a problem.
I mean, we're going to, we're going to cover, you know, most of the folks in the city sit on some board, you know, Performing Arts Center, Broward Health. If we want to start people, you know, looking at organizations that people volunteer their time to, you're going to wipe out almost everybody in the city that is public service-minded.
Who are we going to recommend from Wyserota?
Richard Weiss.
Oh, Richard, okay.
Well, I think, though, that Mr. Brown is mentioning, I don't know if he was talking about people that do public service or that are active in the city, but I don't know. Is there, I mean, we could have this discussion at some point in time, but is there a difference between a vendor who is doing business with the city versus a registered lobbyist in the city who is working, you know, lobbying on behalf of clients? I don't know. Is there a difference? Is there a distinction? I don't know.
So the actual terminology used in the statute is a conflicting employment or contractual relationship. So in the instance of a lobbyist, they don't have a contractual relationship with the city.
A question. Depending on the board or the advisory, could each board have restrictions, like P&amp;Z might want to restrict developers, cemetery board? Each board has different things that might be considered conflict.
Well, I think we're all going to die, so we might all have an interest in the cemetery board.
But we might not want to be buried there.
So the question is, like, P&amp;Z might have certain obvious things that you want to restrict as far as, like, the fire board or parks and rec, I mean, there are different things that might be considered conflict. Just to have a broad thing that if you work for the city might not apply to each individual board, could each board restrict them? Who can or cannot sit on the board?
So the city commission sets the regulations and the parameters of each of the boards in the city. So it would be this body that would have to, set by the resolution that establishes that board, the parameters and the restrictions for appointing board members. With regards to the P&amp;Z board, the nature of the board, matters like quasi-judicial matters would naturally preclude individuals who have an interest from participating in those boards, because that's also barred. The voting conflict is barred by state law as well.
Okay. Pam?
I have concern with what's being said. I believe that what makes our commission and advisory boards, excuse me, our committees and advisory boards work so well, because we have a vast opportunity of individuals, their interests, and their expertise. And if we begin to limit opportunities, I believe that we will be, in a sense, limiting what our citizens are willing to pour into what we're able to do in this city. So I believe going in this direction may create a curve that we are not prepared to embrace.
Well, there's definitely a fine line to be drawn there. Obviously, we're trying to eliminate as much conflict of interest as possible, and I think your point is well-taken, Mr. Brown. So something for this commission to consider at some point. Now, getting to the issue of goal-setting for the Charter Revision Board, has anyone come today, I mean, it doesn't have to necessarily be the only time we discuss this, but has anyone come today with suggestions on what the Charter Commission, Charter Revision Board should consider once they convene as a full board? Commissioner Herbst, do you have any thoughts on what agenda we might suggest for them?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is more about process. So I've had conversations with the city manager as to the intent and purpose of this particular item, and as I understood it, this is to lay out the timeline for getting something on a referendum, backing it from that point and so forth. You know, I told him I'm not prepared to bring forward any recommendations at this point. I don't know, I understand there's a list that the, I believe the prior city attorney may have prepared, which I have not seen. So I think this is a premature discussion. What I'd like to focus on, if the rest of the commission is in agreement, is process, and then let the board meet and come back, and then I think we need to have a joint meeting between the commission and the Charter Revision Board to talk about things that we'd like to see in, as well as things that are carryover from prior ones, because as you recall, there are many items that get brought up and discussed at these. I've sat through them as city auditor. I was one of the ex officios on this for many years, and I can tell you, there are a lot of items that are discussed that are worthy of going on to the Charter that don't make it into the final version, because we recognize that only two or three things are likely to get voted on. If we put 10 things on, people have a tendency just to vote no. When they don't understand things, the default answer is no. So we've usually tried to narrow it down to the couple of things that we believe are critical for moving the city forward. So I'd like to see the prior list of things that the Charter Revision Board has looked at in the past. I'd like to see the list that the attorney's office has prepared based on things that they've observed, that they feel, you know, up in Tallahassee, they call this the glitch bill, where you come back and you fix the things that are wrong in the bill that you passed after you've passed it. And so I think we need to do that, and at the same time, give each of us an opportunity to put together our list of things that we think would be pertinent. So that would just be my offering for, you know, my goal for today is process, not to start offering suggestions as to what should be on there.
Okay. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
I agree. I agree. I don't want to offer anything today, but I am asking the question, it's been, when was the last meeting that was held by the review board?
It was in 2018, and the last two meeting minutes are in the backup.
Okay, so 2018, so I believe what my colleague is suggesting, that we get a previous list of what was being discussed, what was being considered at that time, that we understand where they were in the process, because now we're 18, 19, 20. That's a long period of time without a review or any meeting of that board. So I'm asking also to receive that list of what was being worked on, and then we can figure out the process that's being presented, and then allowing the review board to go ahead and begin meeting. I don't think we need to prolong this. There is a timeline. We are preparing again for election, and the main reason why I kept saying, let's get the Charter Review Board back in motion, there's things in our charter that needs to be addressed before we go into another election season. So time is of the essence. Correct me if I'm wrong, they would normally meet the first Thursday of the month?
Correct. That is what, that is what was adopted via resolution.
Okay. So are they meeting the first Thursday in February?
They will start now upon the appointments this evening.
Okay, so with the appointments that are being offered and voted on, and then there may be some that will be remaining in position, right? So with what's being said, there should be no reason not to move forward on a meeting on the first Thursday?
No, we expect that they convene and they can start that process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So yes, I do know that we've been asking for, I know, I've been keeping sort of a list for the last year and a half when I was mentioning it to the city attorney at commission meetings, and I, too, would like to see that list. So I think as soon as we see that list, that'll be great, because I haven't been keeping notes and track of all of them. But off the top of my head, and I am glad to hear that they're going to convene on February 2nd, I think the first order of business should be, we need to see a review of exactly where the city charter is in conflict with itself and also with the state statutes. That's, for me, the main thing. I think we also do have to decide, I brought this up at the last meeting, but if we feel that we want to look at an August primary and then followed by a November general election, that will have to be discussed pretty quickly if we intend it to take effect somehow with a special election before the November 2024 election. If not, it'll have to apply after. But again, we had that discussion a little bit prior to this meeting, and I think we need to come to a consensus. I did read the October 4th and October 15th, 2018 Charter Revision Board minutes, and we have covered some of those things. They talked a lot at those two meetings about the election process and whether we should move to November, but also what they mentioned, and I think is worth considering, is possibly staggered terms. I'm not so sure if we will all agree on that or how we feel about that, but I think it's worth a discussion. There are many ways to look at that, if you think it's a good idea to replace an entire commission in one fell swoop, or is it a good idea to stagger terms, so there is some sort of continuity as you go forward. So August primaries, staggered terms, the list that the city attorney's office is moving. Also, something I've mentioned in the past, we appoint a vice mayor in April. I think that's a holdover, because our election was always in March, and then the following month, we always appointed a vice mayor. So I don't think that makes sense anymore. If we're going to be holding elections in November, I think that we should probably look to move that to December. And that's about the immediate list that I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry, before, if I may interrupt, I'd just like to, to the city attorney, to Commissioner Glassman's suggestion about setting up a primary, I just want to understand if that's feasible in our timeline, because that would have to be the Charter Revision, and the Charter Revision is going to be on the November election. So I'm assuming you're meaning then for future elections, not for, not for the 2024. Am I understanding that correctly?
I haven't figured out whether it's even possible for 2024, and I would leave it to the city attorney's office, because I know that obviously that has to move quickly, because you'd have to have a special election. There's no general election for us before 2024, so it would probably have to be a special election, but I'm not totally...
But I think the idea is a good one. I just want to understand from a time-wise perspective if it's even practicable to do that within the constraints that we have.
For this next election cycle, unless we, unless we did have a special election in November...
Special election just for the Charter.
Or in March.
And that would be just on the Charter, then? So we'd have a special election just to vote on Charter amendments?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I would leave the timeline and the timetable and to someone else to back it up, the city clerk, city attorney, basically knowing when the election is in November. I don't know when that is, is it the 5th of November?
Are there any elections, I wonder if there are any elections this November in the county? I'm not sure if anything's taking place. I know in March, there will be, next March, but how about in November?
Yeah, in March, 2024, there'll be the presidential preference primary.
Oh, the presidential preference primary?
Which will be countywide, so we could potentially put a referendum on with it.
That would give us sufficient time to be able to implement any changes, if we do make any changes, for that particular election year. Okay.
Correct.
That's even better, then. We don't have to fund an entire special election on our own. That's even better.
Right, right. Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
One of the reasons I hate following Steve is because he takes the thunder out of everything that I was going to suggest, so a lot of his same suggestions are the same what I would have. My community had five things, you've already touched upon a couple. Number one, the obvious one is cleaning up the deficiencies that we've had with this past election. Number two, obviously, cleaning up the swearing-in dates to correlate with when the election's certified. Three, just like you said, having the commissioner being voted in by majority, that means having a primary, so be it. Third thing is, I think that we need to switch the way we do our meeting notices to correlate with what's required by the state. Is that correct? David?
So the issue we have is that we have a charter provision with regards to public hearings, and so that requires a notice to be sent out 12 days before the public hearing and seven days thereafter, and that's inconsistent with a lot of notice requirements in state statute. And so if that can be removed, it would alleviate some of the expense in providing notices.
So that could be cleaned up with the Charter, too. And the last, the fifth and last one, that, you know, again, some people in the community just want to throw out there, not that it's feasible, is maybe considering going back to March. Notes a smaller electorate, but they tend to be more educated on our city and focused. So it's something that they consider, not that we're going to do it, but something to bring up.
Okay. Again, we have an opportunity at our, at our meeting on Thursday to also discuss this, if you, if any, any member of this commission wants to bring up in our goal-setting session any goals that we'd like to achieve with the Charter Review Board. any goals that we'd like to achieve with a, with the charter review board in trying to make any adjustments to our current charter. Okay, so if there's no further discussion on business one, we'll move to business. Yes, sir.
Actually, I wanted to ask my colleague, city attorney, to provide some details about the charter revision as you formulate your, your thoughts and as you talk to your appointees. I think this is important, what he shared with us this morning. City attorney, can you assist us with that?
Sure. So the process for amending the charter is governed by section 166.031 of the Florida statutes, and that specifically provides for the ability for the municipalities to amend their charter pursuant to that section, notwithstanding any provision within their, their charter provisions to the contrary of the statute. So what the statute provides is for the, for the amending of the, for the amending of the charter by referendum, the city commission would have to adopt a resolution placing a referendum on the next general election ballot, or the commission can set a special election for the sole purpose of addressing the charter amendment. That you were discussing could be done in conjunction with another election that would take place as well. So the process would be going before the charter revision board, their recommendations coming before this commission for consideration, then we're setting two readings for the adoption of an ordinance to set the referendum question, and that would then be processed through the supervisor of election. Also, the setting up of the special election via the adoption of a resolution to that effect, which would be a separate action than the resolution establishing the charter referendum issue.
So knowing all of that, Duane, and knowing that there's an election in March that you possibly could shoot for, for these charter revisions, will someone be able to just back it up and let us know by when does charter review, charter revision, rather?
Give us a timetable.
Give us everything that we need. When do we have to act? When do we have to have the first reading? When do we have the second reading? In other words, so that we meet that timeline, and then also, obviously, I would, the city clerk has to get together with the supervisor of elections, and then there's a lot to do, but someone definitely needs to help us out and back all that up and get us to that date.
Certainly, we can work on a timeline for you.
Thank you.
That's a three-meeting requirement, two for the ordinance and one for the resolution?
So the resolution can be adopted at the same meeting that one of the ordinances are heard, but at a minimum, you're having two meetings to adopt a resolution, a ordinance, rather, sorry.
Any further comments? Okay. Business two, this is a discussion regarding the George T. Lomar wastewater treatment plant permitting capacity. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ACM Fajardo is prepared to talk about the wastewater treatment plant capacity and what staff is doing right now to make sure that we are in correct terms with the county and the state.
Good afternoon. Anthony Fajardo, Assistant City Manager, City of Fort Lauderdale. So we're doing a presentation just to give you an update on where we are with our capacity for the George T. Lomar Treatment Plant and how that is affecting our permitting. So in this presentation, I'm going to go over what the state and the county requirements are for their permitting standards, as well as our max permitted capacity versus what we can actually, what we actually have in capacity, our DRC analysis standards for any projects going through that process, and also go over some of our pending projects, allocated capacity, and again, our current status of capacity and some next steps that we can consider. So the plant serves us, of course, but it also serves the city of Wilton Manners, Oakland Park, Port Everglades, portions of Tamarack, and portions of unincorporated Broward County. So there's a lot of people that are serviced by the, by the treatment plant. So the state uses a three-month average to determine our permit capacity, and the limit for that permit is 56.6 million gallons per day. The important thing to note about the state is that they delegate authority over to the county, and I'll get into those permit requirements in a second. But something that I'm going to be reiterating probably a couple times through the presentation is that although we are getting close to our permit capacity, we are nowhere near what the design limitations are for the plant. The plant is roughly designed for 93.5 million gallons, but the limiting factor there is how much we can put into the injection wells. The county, through their Environmental Protection and Growth Management Department, permits us at 48 million gallons per day based on an annual average daily flow. Again, nowhere near the design limitations of the, of the plant itself. So as of January 2023, our three-month average daily flow is about 48.5 million gallons per day. Again, that's against the state's limitation of 56.6. So we've got some leeway there. Where we're getting close is in the annual average daily flow for the county at 43.6 million gallons per day, and that one is again, limited at 48 million gallons per day. So we're getting close to about a million gallons, give or take. So the allocation status as of January 2023 is 47 million gallons per day against the county permit. So that's where that million gallons is coming into. We've scrubbed our lists so that we know exactly how much we have allocated based on entitlements of projects that have gone through the process, and we also know how many projects are actually online. What I'll be talking about in a minute is inflow and infiltration, which is really a big factor in pushing those numbers around. So again, completed developments and inflow and infiltration are two of the biggest factors when you look at the actual daily flows. The completed developments are everything that makes all the plumbing function, right? The toilets, the sinks, the showers, that type of thing. Inflow and infiltration is influenced heavily by seasonal events, heavy rainfalls, high water tables. If water that does not need to be treated, that is going into the system and going to the plant. So it's, it's, it's a large amount of water, and we're dealing with it through some CIP projects, which I'll get into in a minute, but if that was removed, we would be in much better shape. When you go through the process, the entitlement is added into it too. So those are all the buildings that went through DRC, went to planning and zoning, went to city commission, received some sort of approval, and we have allocated the capacity based on an analysis that was done at the DRC level. Again, it's important to note that we don't allocate that until the entitlement is granted by the approving body. So the following, I have a couple of graphs, just so you can get an idea of what the treatment plant has to deal with. So the blue line represents 2021, the orange line 2022. You can see a spike in June that's vastly different in 2022 from 2021, and that's really has to do with that inflow and infiltration. So you get water getting into the system, it spikes it up, it increases the flows, and then we have to deal with that affluent through our process and that, and going over some of our limits.
What was June of 2021, just a dry summer?
Dr. Glassman has all these numbers in her head.
Nancy Gasman, Assistant Public Works Director, Sustainability. In June 3rd and 4th of the summer of 2022, the city experienced the impacts of potential tropical cyclone number one, and that was a 10-inch rainfall event that occurred over a two-day period.
Okay. So that was a, I'm sorry. So that was an unusually high rainfall event then?
It was an unusually high rainfall event at that particular time of the year.
Okay.
So it's not that 20, it's not that 21 was low, it's that 22 was high?
Yes. And then you can see in that area where you have hurricane season, you get that slope going up and then down.
Right, right. Well, the rest of it's consistent, it's just that that spike was...
Correct.
Okay.
So this graph's got a lot of numbers and a lot of squiggly lines on it. The, the lines that are important to look at is the topmost line that's straight, that's the purple with the purple dots. That represents our permit capacity from the county. The blue line are the two lines you saw in the last line, last slide, put together for over a two-year time period. So you see that same spike over in June, and then the consistent spikes around November, December. The red line with the gray dots represents what we are doing in terms of allocations along with completed projects. So that's the line to pay attention to, and you can see it's getting really close to the purple line, it's practically touching it.
So what happens, you know, you have the permitted capacity, which is that one straight line, right? And the blue, which exceeds that line, what happens to the water flow during those peak periods?
So the water is still treated because the plant has the capacity to do it. The limiting factor is the injection wells. If we can't inject it into the well, we don't want to cause a black, backflow into the system. So it's then, that treated affluent is put into the waterway.
It's treated affluent though?
It is treated, yes.
Is that gray water treated or potable water treated?
I don't know if, Alan, if you want to...
I don't think it's potable water.
It's, I don't believe it's potable water. It's not potable water.
But it's, is that, it's not polluted water, it's treated?
Fully treated affluent.
What did he say?
Fully treated affluent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Don't drink it.
And that's it? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So a little bit about our development review process. So we have a section called adequacy in 4725.2 of our Unified Land Development Regulations. It stipulates everything that we have to look at, water and sewer capacity being one of them. So what we do is when an applicant comes through and they have a project with X number of square footage related to restaurant, commercial, number of units, the engineering staff takes a look at that information, runs it through their model, develops the capacity that's needed for that project. We then issue a letter to them that they can then take forward to the approving body. If it's DRC, that's one thing, but if it's Planning and Zoning Board, City Commission, you see it as part of your backup. When the PZB or the city commission makes their decision, that's when it's allocated. So again, we've allocated more than is actually operating right now, so there is the difference there to remember. I don't want anyone thinking that the plant's in any kind of danger of losing its ability to treat. To give you just an example of what we had to deal with over 2022 in terms of the volume of projects that came in, current allocations are at 47 million gallons per day, as I said earlier, and that includes everything. But in 2022, we had 69 projects that accounted for 1.67 million gallons per day. Now, these projects are in various stages. Some of them have been approved, some of them are still in the process, but if you added them all together, that's what we got over the last year. Now, we are seeing a slowdown in the development industry, we're seeing less projects on the DRC, so we don't know that that pace will be kept up, but it is something to consider moving forward. So again, running below our physical capacity, no danger there, we're just getting close to our permitted capacity by the county, 1 million gallons per day. So some next steps that we are looking at to move forward with, trying to address this proactively, is, first one is to increase our physical capacity. So we are engaging a consultant, a firm's called CDM. They're actually going to do two things for us in this process. One is to look at the actual plant itself, come up with recommendations for system upgrades. Those would be mechanical upgrades to increase capacity at the plant or others, other system improvements that would increase that capacity. The other one is looking at increasing our mechanical integrity testing and cleaning. That's a very fancy way of saying the pipes that push the water into the injection well get dirty. And then like any plumbing system, as they clog, it slows down the flow, which then results in us having to use that other option to, with the affluent. So right now, we clean them about a five-year interval. We want to standardize it as, at a two-year interval. So the more we clean them, the more we maintain them, the better off they'll be. I and I, again, inflow and infiltration. The investment that we've made so far is about $20 million. That represents a small percentage of the overall system. We've got about $114 million designated on our CIP over the next, between FY '23 and '27. So hopefully, we can start seeing that needle move, because right now, with the work that we've done, we've really not seen a lot of change in, in the impacts of I and I. We also have our large consumers, those cities that I mentioned and the other, the other organizations. We need to reach out to them and see what they're doing about their I and I, because they're going into the same system. So if we fix our problems, but the cities of Oakland Park and Wilton Manners do not, we still have an I and I issue. CDM is also working with us and the county on possibly expanding our current permit. So we had a good meeting with them recently. It was engineering staff along with some staff from DSD and CDM and the county. So they had some very good questions, things that we are reasonable to ask. So we'll be responding to those and moving forward with that to see if there's the ability to expand that permit beyond the 48 million gallons per day. And then another is looking at how we actually allocate. So as I said before, we're allocating these at, at the time of entitlement, but some of these projects are just sitting idle, they're not being constructed. So that means they're, have obviously reserved this capacity, they're not using it, and it may sit there for years. We've had projects that were extended by the state many, many times due to statewide disasters by the governor, and some of these that would normally be expired by us, our code says 18 months to submit for a building permit from approval and 24 months to be issued a building permit. They're going way beyond that. So I've talked to interim city attorney Spence. He thinks that it's something that we can look at and see if there's another way to acknowledge that allocation at building permitting rather than at the time of entitlement. There's a lot to look into that and the impacts of what that might mean, but it is something that I think is worthwhile for us to explore. And I believe that is it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions to the commission?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Herbs?
Thank you. So we're looking at 20 million plus, what did I say, another 114 million?
114 million.
And so this will be on top of the doubling of our increase on the water side. So what are we anticipating in terms of cost increases associated with sewer work to support this? Is this going to be bonded out? Is this pay-as-you-go funding? What's our sort of capital program here?
Alan, are you aware of the funding source that's been designated?
Mayor and commissioners, this is, the 114 million is already in our CIP. It is largely from 454, which is the Water and Soil Fund, but it's part of the capital investments that we do every year. We do, I believe, approximately 28 to 30 million per year that goes into capital projects.
So as we talk about CIP, though, it's only the first year that's actually funded. So the CIP is a five-year wish list. Year one is what's funded. Years two through five are to be programmed, if you will. So is that anticipated to be funded out of current operations? In other words, pay-as-you-go? Or is there a financing mechanism to support those additional dollars?
There, there is currently, up into FY '23, $48 million available for us to spend in contracts.
That's already appropriated and available?
That is already appropriated for us to spend. The remainder of the money is in fiscal years '24 through '27, and it is programmed in the, the CIP portion of the budget, broken out through each of the years.
So the answer is...
Right, but CIP portion of the budget, but, hold on, Mayor, please. The CIP portion of the budget, again, the CIP, I've been doing CIP plans for 20 years. So the CIP portion of the budget is not a funded budget, okay? CIP is a plan, capital improvement plan. It's not a budget. The only parts that's a budget is year one. So when we talk about that, I want to understand if the intent to budget that money in the future years is built into our current rate structure, or are we going to be borrowing in order to put that money out there in the out years? I think that's more a Susan question.
And it is in our, based on the current CIP. But, yeah, it is.
So I'm going to double check, but I think there might have been a portion allocated in the next $200 million tranche of the water and sewer bond, which is already incorporated into the rate structure. But I don't have the breakdown of the 200 million right here, but we will get back to you on that.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
But to answer his question, we're not increasing any millage rate in order to accommodate the funding of this project.
And if it was an increase anywhere, it wouldn't be in the millage, it would be in water and sewer rates. But if it's incorporated already into the next 200 million water and sewer bond, that's already anticipated as part of the rate study.
It's already programmed in.
Correct. If it's in there.
Right.
If it's, if it's in there, keyword.
Right. But, but in response to his question, the, the future years, '24, '25, and '26, and '27 are all wish list items, and that haven't really been approved by the commission.
And that's so, that's true with the, the CIP across the board, that the full year...
Across the board. Every, every CIP project.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Beasley Pittman, do you have any questions?
No questions.
You're good? You're good, everyone good? Okay. I have a question. So the, using the Five Ash analogy, we're dealing with a nineteen sixty Buick here, all right? What's, what are the thoughts about the necessity of rebuilding the water treatment plant, the sewage treatment plant? Is that, is that something that's in our radar, or has that never been conceived, seen as a necessity at this point?
So I would say it could possibly be on, on our radar. CDM will take a look at the plant and look, and give us an assessment of it and let us know what they think is the best course of action at that point.
Okay, so that assessment has not yet been done?
It's about to start, we're really close. They've already started working on, we got the PO for the other portion where they're talking to the county. We're working on that for the next part.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Peter Partington, are you still here? Yes, you are.
Peter Partington, city resident, also a member of ITF, but I'm here in a personal, personal capacity. I wasn't exactly sure what this item was about, but what I wanted to say is you have to be very careful with averages. And to use my own analogy, if you have one foot in a bucket of freezing water and you have one foot in a bucket of boiling water, on average, you're comfortable. So what I would suggest is, I think, is you haven't heard enough yet on this process. I have no problem with any other proposed actions, but you need to hear more about the consequences of having your foot in a bucket of boiling water. Specifically, no facility ever is going to be able to handle a hundred percent of intense rainfalls. And remember that because of climate change, the rainfall intensity is increasing, possibly the frequencies of that intense rainfall. So I think you need to hear more from staff about what the downsides are of when the average is exceeded and even the, we're told what the absolute capacity is. And there's one specific issue that I would like to question, which is back to the two thousand and seventeen Rees report. And that, even then, was referring to the need for another injection well at Lomire by twenty twenty-one. And I don't believe that that has actually occurred yet. So what I'm asking you to do in connection with this item is to look at the consequences of climate change and increased rainfall. I think I would also suggest, well, that's not for me to speak for the ITF, that this might be a good item to be brought to the ITF. Thank you.
But Peter, isn't the whole issue of I and I is connected with the rainfall? And if we, if we, you know, if we're able to proceed with a program of trying to add to our, to our underground pipe systems, wouldn't that go a long way in reducing the stress on the wastewater treatment plant?
It does, and it frees up capacity for your average day. It only helps minimally when you're having five inches of rain in five hours or something like that. And that is, that is occurring. Again, what I'm asking is, you should be fully aware of the consequences of increasingly intense rainfalls, particularly untreated sewage, at all points of the system getting into the intracoastal. I believe we have had an intense rainfall occurrences that have had to be reported to the Florida DEP. So I'm just asking that you hear more about that particular subject.
Well, I remember, I remember when I was a commissioner, that it happened, and Mr. Feldman told us at the time that it was treated water that went into the, into the waterways, not polluted water, right?
I think it depends, you know, I think Dr. Gasman is the expert, but I think it depends where it's emanating from.
Right.
I mean, I'm not sure to the extent in which in intense rainfall, the whole system, starting at the disposal works, backs up. So there's, there's consequences that I'm not fully in the picture on, and I'm questioning, you know, whether you should be told about them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item? There being none, we'll move on to city commissioner reports.
Thank you, mayor. We've, we've had a couple of good meetings with some of my HOAs in the district. It's a very valuable and educational opportunity for me to meet with them, and I've enjoyed that. We're really looking forward to some of the things that are coming up. We've got a meeting scheduled next week to go to, meet with Jorge Mas and tour the facility up at Lockhart Park. I'm hoping that we can move that project forward. It is the signature park for District One, and as we all know, it's years behind schedule. We're going to be discussing that a little bit later this afternoon, and it's something that, that my district is very excited about.
When is that supposed to happen? When is that meeting supposed to happen?
That's scheduled for next Tuesday, eleven AM.
Next Tuesday, okay.
Right, so, thank you.
Does that conclude your remarks? Okay, Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Good afternoon to everyone again. Giving you a report of what I had the pleasure of, who I had the pleasure of meeting with in these last two weeks, some of the things that we accomplished as well. I had the pleasure of meeting with Elena Warson in regards to the mass, the micro transit solutions, which is our circuit opportunity. Had a great conversation with her, interested in even having conversation as a commission of how we could even expand the opportunity into District Three. I believe it's a great opportunity to allow our neighbors to move in and around our city. So I did have a conversation with her. On the eleventh, I had a conversation with Nancy Robin with Habitat for Humanity, having a tour of their facility, being introduced to some of the things, some of the projects that's on our, that are pending in our city that will be coming forward. Also, having conversations with, regarding to the One Stop Project, meeting with Stephanie Two Acre, Jeff John, and also Sharonda Prasad. Had a great meeting with, on January twenty-third, with Adina Wilson. She has a clinic by the name of Light of the World Clinic, and they have a great opportunity where they offer services to everyone in Broward County, but they're looking, hopefully, to be able to share and reach out more to the citizens in Fort Lauderdale, working with those neighbors who may not necessarily have insurance, may have a fear of going to hospitals due to possibly being not documented, but providing medical care for them as well. I had a great opportunity to attend on the seventeenth, the swearing-in ceremony for our U.S. Representative Debbie Wasserman-Swartz, also Congresswoman Sheila Scheffler-McCormitt, and also Jared Monziewicz. That was a great opportunity. The mayor and the other commissioners were at that particular swearing-in ceremony as well. I'm going back one day on, on the date of January the sixteenth, I had the privilege of riding and being co-general marshal. With our mayor for the MLK parade. We had an awesome time. I enjoyed riding alongside with our mayor.
That was a great, that was a great parade.
And it was a great parade, great, great event that ended in Carter Park, many vendors, the community was out, and it was a great day, and it was a, a day of unity.
I liked the parade route also. It, it drew a lot of people from the community, and there were no gaps in, in, you know, spectators in, in the end at Carter Park. It was a great collection of everybody at the end of the parade, so I hope we can keep it that way. It was really a great success.
It was a great afternoon, it really was, okay. Also, wanting to share that on yesterday, the twenty-third, at the YMCA, there was a scholarship fair that was available to the citywide, and it's a great opportunity, and for years, even as HOA president, we were doing our best to get this information out to all the students in our city and, and really countywide. The organization's name is Infinite Scholar, and it's a scholarship fair that comes annually, and it's usually held in our city. And they bring in anywhere from thirty to forty colleges from all over the U.S., and it gives our, our, our children in this city an opportunity to present their resumes, their SAT scores, their opportunity to be even admitted into college on the spot. They give a waiver for the admittance fee, there's no application fee. They look over the admittance officers who are there, they look over the information, they have a scale, and most of the young people there, they are given a letter of intent where they are admitted, receive invitation for admittance into the college that they're pursuing. And what I love about it so much is, we have been preparing the students in the community and allowed them to be prepared. We tell them to have a package for ten different colleges, so they can go to whoever's there that they're interested in. And on the average, most of the students, they will walk away, those who are prepared, they'll walk away with three offers of full rides to college, and this is very important. And I would love even moving forward as a commission, as the city, that we figure out how we can be a part in making sure that this is an opportunity for our city overall, not just District Three. It's a great opportunity. Also, I, I had my free community agenda meeting last night with District Three, mostly with my neighbors that live on the south side of Broward, including those neighborhoods of Marrows Manners, Marrows Park, Riverland, Riverland Village. Also, Lauderdale West was there in the house, Sunset, so my constituents that are on the south side of the district. And it was a great turnout, I was really excited to meet with them. I explained to them that it is my, my, my intention to get to know them better, because I am more, have been more rooted and more familiar with those who are on the north end of the district, because of course, I grew up there, so that's more like a stomping ground. But that's not going to be my benchmark. My intention is to get to know and interact with everyone in the district. It was a great turnout, I believe we had about maybe twenty, twenty-five people there, and I, and I was really excited about that. So these are some of the things that I have been doing since the last commission meeting, and a couple concerns, I wanted to go back to one item. When we met on the last time as a commission, I did ask about the tunnel, the Boring Company, and what do we do as a city to reach out to those cities that were identified that were ghost? And if you could fill us in, city manager, with what the results was with those conversations with those cities.
So staff is right now reaching out to those individuals that were involved in those projects to get you a summary of their experience and references, and we're still in that process. I believe that within the next two weeks, we should have something available for the commissioner review.
Could you share with us what might have been the delay? Is it, what's causing the slowness? I was hoping for it to be a little faster.
So, yes, certainly, and Ben Rogers may help in that. Some of the people have left those positions that were involved with the project. So we're reaching out to departments where the individual that was working on that project is no longer there. There is one person that now works for Ernst &amp; Young, and so that was involved in the project, but that wouldn't be a good reference because they're no longer there, and it's also a conflict because it's a company we do business with. So we're trying to find good references, and, and Ben will elaborate more on that.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor Commission, Ben Rogers, Director of Trash Fashion. So after the last meeting, we went through the Wall Street Journal article and identified the locations, and we made contact with some of the offices and are working with their contacts there. We've also reached out to the Boring Company to ask for their points of contact, to make sure that it's either the same person or to get a second opinion from each city. And then some of the governments that they've worked with were larger ones, like the state of Maryland. So trying to track down the right person is, is a challenge of itself, and I don't have a governor's personal contact information. So we're working through that research right now. We've made contact with a couple of them, and we're just trying to get on the calendar to be able to do that.
Could you tell me who you have made contact with to make those appointments?
I can't, I can't on the spot, but I can, I can follow up with you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, great. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Okay, and again, congratulations to everyone that was involved and all the organizers for Monday, January sixteenth, for Martin Luther King Day. That day, I, I did attend. Mayor, you were there as well. We did lose a few months ago a really wonderful activist in District Two, Luis Castillo. He was a, a big part of South Middle River Civic Association for many years, and also was an appointee on the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, and that was a sudden passing, and it was really a loss to the neighborhood. So it was nice to be with all those folks. There was a great slideshow, and the mayor complained that I was in too many of the photos, but other than that, it was really a lovely, a lovely afternoon. Thank you, mayor.
If you want to go on Facebook, you should have your picture taken with Commissioner Glassman.
Thank you, mayor. Tuesday, January seventeenth, yes, it was already mentioned by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, but I found the, the words of Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz and Sheila Scheffler-McCormitt and Jared Monziewicz very inspirational. Their remarks were absolutely wonderful. That was a PAC County Commission chamber. The mayor, Mayor Lamar Fisher, did a great job as the emcee, and I know the mayor was there, and vice mayor was there as well, but I really did enjoy listening to what they had to say. Wednesday, January eighteenth, Flagler Village Civic Association had its meeting, and also congratulations to everyone. I've heard really good things from folks that did attend the town hall for the water plant. So again, thank you to staff and everyone involved in putting that together and then doing it again tomorrow evening as well. Thursday, January nineteenth, I really enjoyed attending the Smart Growth Partnership Annual Forum and Luncheon. Our very own city cultural affairs officer was the moderator for that day, Josh Carden, because the emphasis was on public art and its impact on communities. So I thought that was really good, that that was a priority of the Smart Growth Partnership. A really nicely attended meeting with folks from really all over Broward County. So congratulations to Josh for putting together that really good program. And then for the weekend, busy on the beach, congratulations to everyone involved in the sea glass event on the, on the sand. That event seems to get bigger and bigger every year, and I've heard only good things from folks that were able to attend that. Sunday, January twenty-second, I had the pleasure of joining the mayor at the Hendrix Isle, Isle of Venice Civic Association meeting, the neighborhood association meeting. That's probably, I think, one of the newest, if not the newest, neighborhood associations in the city.
And it's a year old.
Definitely District Two. Yeah, definitely District Two's newest neighborhood association, it might even be the city, and they had a really good turnout for that meeting, and it was a beautiful day, right on Hendrix Isle. So congratulations to that board under the president, Debbie Isinger, for getting that together and really accomplishing so much in a short period of time. On upcoming, tomorrow's going to be an interesting day at the La Solis Oceanside Park, right on La Solis in A1A. We're going to win- We're going to inaugurate the Pixar Putt-Putt. And I know that that's going to be really successful. And I know that I'm hearing from a lot of folks in my district about it. But I think it's going to be an amazing family attraction for folks all over the city to come and enjoy that. Where each hole in the miniature golf is going to be, the theme will be a different Pixar movie for each hole. So I would really recommend folks check that out. There's a lot of information online.
What day is that?
Tomorrow is the beginning. And I think it's there for three months. Three months in the park. They've been setting up for the last bunch of days. I've been putting that information in my district email. But I know that folks are really looking forward to that. That starts tomorrow. And I think it's good for, as I said, three months. Tomorrow, the District 2 Presidents of all the Neighborhood Associations will have a meeting, our roundtable, our quarterly roundtable. Always a great exchange of ideas. Tomorrow night, Ignite is a really interesting public art display, a light show that you'll see downtown. If you see all of that happening downtown, that's a County Cultural Affairs Division public art installation that will be up for, I think, five days. It's called Ignite. Thursday, I'm looking forward to us all getting together again for our goal-setting workshop at the YMCA. That evening will also be a Central Beach Alliance meeting at Bahia Mar. That evening is also the Hizinga Park 20th Anniversary Celebration. And that evening is also the Avenue of the Arts Visual Arts Festival. That's the kickoff. It'd be part of the Fort Lauderdale Art and Design Week, which is going on right now. But that's going to be something special. While the Fort Lauderdale Art and Design Week is the 21st through the 29th now, this is a brand-new component of that. These folks, the Avenue of the Arts Visual Arts Festival, is really going to take place mostly along Northwest 7th Avenue with many events centered in and around the Cistrunk Marketplace. Which if you haven't been there in a while, you should really check it out. Because now there's even an annex behind it. And that place is doing really well and attracting a lot of people. Again, that's at the Cistrunk Marketplace. Friday, the 27th, I'll be attending pretty much a half-day retreat for the International Swimming Hall of Fame Board of Directors. And I did want to also congratulate the construction crew for what they'll be holding on that day also. They'll be having their topping-off party at the Pier 66. Saturday, January 28th, is a very exciting day on the Barrier Island. We're going to have the Aquatic Center ribbon cutting. And that's also going to be tied into the International Swimming Hall of Fame Diving Challenge. It's going to be a great show. I believe Greg Louganis will be there, many other Olympians. It's going to be a great day on the beach. Would welcome everyone to that. And also, that dive challenge is going to be phenomenal from our brand-new dive tower in that facility. That evening, I'll be attending the Human Rights Campaign Dinner at the Harbor Beach Marriott. And do I have any comments? Just a couple of comments. So I'm very concerned because I'm hearing a lot from folks in and around the La Solas Garage, City Manager. This has been something that I've been complaining about almost since the day that they were installed. But the lights are a nightmare on the garage. So we need to get some sort of report. We need to get something done to deal with the fact that so many of those strands of lights just don't work. And it's getting worse and worse. And I hear about it frequently. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Ben, do you have any update on what's going on there? I don't even believe we've accepted the project because of the screening. We still have an issue with the rusting on the screening.
Yeah, good afternoon. Ben Rogers, Director of Trash and Seguility. So on the La Solas scotch lights, right now, we are exploring or investigating what's going on. As you recall, about a year ago, we had a lot of issues as well. We had the electrical contractor come out and test and found out there was a lot of connections that didn't have the right waterproofing. That was creating them to shore it out. So what we're doing now is reaching out to them to see if that's the same case or if the lights are burning out because they're almost five years old now or if there's another issue. So we're working on that right now. To your point, Mayor, we still have some open items on the garage. And I'd have to defer to the city attorney on the status of that. I believe that we were working with outside counsel on reviewing the mesh and the lights.
At some future meeting, Duane, if you can give us a report on that.
Right. It's just that those items have just really never been right ever since the garage opened. And it's a shame because it's a great facility. And if they were working, it would be terrific because it really does make a difference. And it's just that that garage has come along really nicely, except for that component of it. The temporary fire station and parking lot just sandwiched in between Bonnet House and Paramount condominium, City Manager. People have been looking at that mess for over a year. It's just, I mean, can we buy another trailer? Can we hook something up? Can we get that going? It's just been, you know, one delay after another. And it's just such an unsightly corner and a prominent corner on the Barrier Island.
Yeah, and I'll let Ben Rogers talk about screening and then also cleaning up that area. And then maybe Alan Dodd can also share the latest on the acquisition of the trailer for the fire rescue.
Yeah, so for the Nash's parcel, we ran into a lot of issues. Some were delays incurred by other projects that didn't allow the relocation of the trailer. The contractor demobilized as a result of that and was scheduled to remobilize when we have all of the parts and components needed to finish the project. During that time, the contract period expired. And then so when we went to bring them back, we had to work out some legal issues, which we're still doing right now. I'd have to defer to the city attorney's office on comment on that information. But we are working through that. I actually was in contact with the contractor earlier today. On a side path, I've already worked with some of our smaller contractors to identify what we could do to mitigate some of the site conditions. You know, maybe some grading, some planning of landscaping, fencing, things like that. And so I'm waiting for the first domino to fall to figure out what the next step would be. But to the city manager's point, we are doing some small things that we can. So we did order fence screening last week to try to hide off the direct visibility into the parcel. But right now, we just have to get that first domino to fall before we can take the next action.
And I know that much of the delay is because of the issues we're having with the HVAC system in Fire Station 13 on the north side of Oakland Park Bridge, which is causing the delay then with that temporary fire station. But do we, the projections that I see in terms of us being able to get to this project are like November of this year, which just seems so ridiculously long. It's only January. I mean, these people that have been looking at all of this and just the fact that we can't use the site is purchasing another...
Do you think the parking lot will be available for public use?
So the first thing is, we've got to remedy the current situation. If we're allowed to or we can work things out with the current contractor and get them back under contract, which will probably take a commission action, then we'll do a change order or incorporate the panel and some other components so we can finish the current condition of the lot and make parking available without having the trailer be relocated to the site. Again, I can't speak on the timeline of that because it is going through that legal review and negotiation.
Well, that would be great. I mean, if we could just bifurcate those two things, temporary fire station versus the parking and just at least do the parking. But again, we've just got to do something better and something more to, you know, just spruce up that corner because it's just been so unsightly. But thank you for that. Hopefully, we can get going on that. And in terms of the actual temporary fire station, are those trailers just something astronomically expensive that we couldn't just purchase a second trailer while we still need the first trailer on the south side of Oakland Park Bridge right now?
So Director Dodd is going to speak more on that?
Mayor, Commissioner Allen Dodd, Public Works Director. We are actually in the process of getting trailers from, I can't remember.
Margate?
From Margate, yes, thank you very much. For approximately $15,000 that could be used if necessary. We were planning on using them for ocean rescue, but that is available. Based on the current timeline for the retrofitting of Fire Station 54, we believe that the trailers that we currently have, though, should be able to be vacated and be available sometime in mid to late summer and would be relocated in the August, September timeframe, which would be well in advance of when we would be need to vacate permanent Fire Station 13 to start that construction project. It's still under design, has not gone through a contract solicitation yet for construction. So we have some time to work with as far as getting the trailers available without having to use the Margate trailers.
Are we making progress with the HVAC issue in terms of holding anyone accountable or contractors? I know that's some of a legal question as well. But are we making progress with that case at all and holding the folks responsible for that station's totally messed-up HVAC system?
Sorry, I don't have the current status of that case for you, but I will follow up on that item for you and get it back to you.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So I had a couple of concerns brought to my attention.
Actually, I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry, Commissioner, can we bring Alan back up for one second? So I've been told that there are rats in that temporary fire station. Can you speak to that? We've got a rodent problem there. I've been hearing from the firefighters that they've got rats.
Commissioner, I have not heard anything on that. I can refer to the fire department. And then we do have a contract within the city to deal with them. So I'm sure that if there are problems, we can...
Commissioner, are you referring to the actual rodents or people?
The actual rodents.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure.
I never refer to people as rats.
I just want to be sure. Thank you.
All right, Stephen Goland, Fire Chief. So it was brought to our attention a couple of weeks ago that there were some rodents out there. Unfortunately, because of the move back and forth, we did not have a contract for that location. Some of the firefighters took it upon themselves and had set up traps outside that had caught rodents outside. There were some efforts made to close up some holes inside. And we were able to get a contract within 24 hours with the pest control company that we had for the other stations. They've been in there since that time and the situation has been mitigated.
All right, so we're thinking then that it's not inundated with rodents and we'll be able to continue to use that structure at other locations?
That is correct.
Thank you.
We're talking about, I just want to make sure, we're talking about the facility on the south side of Oakland Park Bridge?
Chief?
With the rats?
Yes, sir. So it's a temporary structure that's located on the south side.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't talking about the original station on the north side. Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next up, City Manager. I have heard complaints from folks that nothing's been moving with regards to, you know, once we took over the cemeteries, status of constructing mausoleums, which seems to be something that people are looking to see. And also, pre-need that we're not able to do, offer in the city. So I'm just looking to get maybe some time in the future. It doesn't have to be now. But just some information about status of moving forward with a mausoleum and also pre-need. That's about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Aren't mausoleums done on a case-by-case, private basis?
I don't think we have any.
Well, there are some personal mausoleums.
Well, no, I mean, like that the city would actually construct a structure.
Even where people are put into a vault?
Well, you can just go right into the wall.
Because I know, for example, Wayne Hizinga is in a personal, a family mausoleum.
I'm sure, but I don't think the average person can do a Wayne Hizinga mausoleum. I'm talking about like a whole structure of, you know, a vault. Right.
I thought you were asking for a CIP grant for your mausoleum. Pre-need, is that what you're talking about?
You know, I have so many needs, Mayor. It's, I don't have enough time in the day. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
It's all good.
Just have three things, pretty quick. Number one, I want to thank everybody who worked with Strandhand High School, the teachers, administration.
Congratulations, finally got that done.
They had a groundbreaking on January 20th. And I want to thank everybody involved with that. That's a huge step on the cafeteria. Number two is Tropical Point Drive, that's in Tarpon River area, has come up to me. And Greg, I just want to go through the process of renaming Tropical Point Drive. There's an eighth street, excuse me, an eighth way, an eighth avenue and an eighth terrace right around there. And the Tarpon River Association had formally requested two years ago renaming that street. So whatever we need to do to get that along. And the third thing, this is possibly the most uncontroversial thing I'm going to talk about. I remember years ago, we used to have elementary school students come up at the commission meetings to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I was wondering if we could institute a program where outstanding students could have the honor of...
That happened when there were students in the audience at the time. And Mayor Seiler would invite the kids or a kid to come up and do that. But it wasn't likely scheduled a kid to come and do that. I have attempted to do that in the past. They've been pretty shy. And, but, you know, I look forward to having someone from the audience lead us. But it hasn't, the opportunity isn't always there. But we can certainly do it.
I'd like a program that you honor the students. You know, maybe every school could want, they could bring a student up here every day and lead us in the pledge just to get people started at a younger age involved with the city. That's my thought.
Okay.
I'm proud to say my stepdaughter was one of those students.
My son as well.
Okay, let me just add a couple of things. Most of you pointed out a lot of the things that I attended that you also attended. Let me just point out a few more things. I attended on January 13th, the Martin Luther King Inspirational Breakfast at the First Baptist Church. It was a very well-attended event and all part of the weekend celebration of Martin Luther King. That same morning, I participated in a speaker series put on by Choose 954 at the LA Lee YMCA. Also a nicely attended event, mostly young kids, learning to, wanting to know what it's like to be mayor and how did I get there. So then, we had a really great event over on the beach on January 14th, the Visit Lauderdale's Food and Wine Festival. Really very well-attended, hundreds and hundreds of people were there. And my hats off to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for a great event and all the restaurateurs and product providers, vendors that participated. It really brought the best side out of Fort Lauderdale. On the 16th was a very busy day. We had the kickoff for United Day Volunteer Efforts at Providence Park, followed by the parade itself. It was probably one of the best-attended Martin Luther King Day parades we've had in the city. Beautiful morning, it was a little chilly, but I think we got used to it. And I was very proud to share the grand marshal position with Commissioner Beasley Pittman. That evening, I also attended the memorial for Luis Castillo. Luis was a great friend. We married him in my office to his partner. And it was just a sad moment in our community's history here to have lost such a great advocate for his neighborhood and for the city overall. That day, I also attended the Imperial Point Annual Meeting. Large turnout, a lot of good people there, a lot of great questions. I also attended a few more neighborhood meetings, the Harbor Beach, as well as Dolphin Isles. And there seems to be a consistent question that comes up in many of these neighborhoods, these single-family home neighborhoods. And most of it has to do with vacation rentals. As it happens, a previous meeting that I attended at, all right, drawing a blank here.
Where's it located?
It's in District 1.
Imperial Point?
No, no.
Shelley, we were talking about it.
East side. No, no, what was it?
Crow Ridge?
No, no, no. I'll think of it in a second.
Bermuda Riviera?
Bermuda Riviera.
I got it, bingo.
The goat door wall now.
Bermuda Riviera. I attended their annual meeting.
Off of A1A.
Correct. And, thank you. And they apparently had HOA, an HOA agreement when they first purchased there. Many, many years ago, there was an HOA that was a mandatory HOA, which the documents had expired. They voted to reinstate them. And I've inquired with our city attorney, who will get back to us at some point, to inquire whether or not any one or more of these homeowners' associations can convene and establish a homeowners' association entity that by majority vote can require participation in all the members and all the homeowners that live within that area and establish rules and regulations and covenants that by which each homeowner would have to abide. And where I'm going with that is that these homeowners' associations are inquiring whether or not they can restrict vacation rentals or manage vacation rentals within their own community. community, and whether or not the law is there to support that. I don't know if that is the case, I know in Bermuda Riviera, they were just reinstating covenants from their HOA, in which that was, which that was their authority to do so. So I spoke with Mr. Spence, he's, his folks are looking into it, and hopefully at some future meeting, we'll have a legal opinion as to what the availability of that approach to restrict vacation rentals in some of these single-family home neighborhoods, if they're available here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention.
I just have a question, Mayor, so would these, because right now, most of these are just civic associations or neighbor associations, so would they have to go through a rigorous exercise to actually become an HOA?
We're going to find out from our city attorney if there is a process and what that process would be.
Thank you.
Let's see. I also participated at the Fort Lauderdale Forum last week on January 17th. I sat on a panel with Mayor Lamar Fisher from the Broward County, and we talked about city-county relations, and where they've been, where they're going, and it was really a very healthy discussion, we had some good questions from the audience, and I think we have a lot of good things that we're working together on. In particular, is the train tunnel, which I think the necessity for it was brought to our attention once again, when the, when the, the bridge over the New River was stuck in place for two days, and it completely frustrated traffic upriver. I even got a call from the folks at Brightline, saying that they really want to push forward with the, with the tunnel approach, and in a week and a half, I believe, we're meeting with the county administrator and with the county mayor, and we're going to discuss the path forward to trying to seek federal funding for that project. So that was, that was one of the important topics of conversation that morning, and I'm happy to see that we can work together with the county to see that happen. I stopped by the Sea Glass Rosé Festival this past weekend, I'm told that both Friday and Saturday, as well as Sunday, was a very well-attended event, another signature event here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. I want to thank all of our folks at Parks and Rec for assisting in that happening, and certainly all the sponsors, City Furniture, Venice Magazine, Carlos, you did a great job employing that together, thank you so much for bringing that event to the city of Fort Lauderdale. Down the road, Commissioner Glassman mentioned the Heisinger Park 20th Anniversary Celebration, that's this Thursday. This Saturday, we're doing the official grand opening of the Aquatic Center. At 11:00 AM, everybody in the community is invited, I'd hope to see everyone on the commission attend there, and it's another really important venue for diving and swimming competition, and I think Fort Lauderdale, once again, regained the crown of being the foremost venue for this type of activity around the world. I'll also be attending, did you say you're going to the HRC event on Saturday?
Yes, Saturday evening.
And I'll be there as well. Let me see, on February 1st, there's a luncheon with the Canadian Business Delegation, the Canada, Florida, the Canada, Florida Chamber of Commerce, and the Canadian Council General will be hosting a luncheon at the Tower Club, and everyone on the commission is certainly invited to that. On February 4th, there are two important events, Handy, the organization on Andrews Avenue, is having a fundraiser event called the Moonrise Modern Disco at the Bonnet House, and that same night, World AIDS Museum is having their Red Gala at the Dakota over in Dania Beach. I'm going to try to go to both of them, but certainly shows the vitality of our community, that we're having so many great activities, fundraisers, nonprofits, producing results for those who can't help themselves. Couple issues, it's been brought to my attention, I don't know if Paula's here, I guess she had to leave, there's a suggestion that we establish another advisory board, and this would be specifically focused on the homeless population of our community, and I want to just throw it out there, I'd like members of this commission to consider it, think whether or not it's necessary, and if it is necessary, how we would comprise it, what would be its mission, and how it might best suit the purposes of the city of Fort Lauderdale. We don't have to discuss it now, but at some point, I'd like to be able to bring it back, if we could just have some thoughts about the possibility of establishing a homeless committee here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. I think everything else I pretty much talked about, is there anything further, anyone else wants to add to their commission reports? They're being known, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Yeah, sure, so we have two items, and I have some others as well beyond the ones that are published. The first one is city attorney recruitment, you all asked, the city commission asked about how we can go about that, and Jerome Post is going to speak on those options, and we'd like to get your feedback and direction.
Anyone have any thoughts?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Jerome Post, the interim Director of Human Resources. We have about three options to offer you in terms of filling this, this position. The first, of course, is for the commission to direct, directly appoint a community member. If you're aware of a qualified candidate that you'd like to appoint, the commission could simply move to appoint that person, then identify staff member or members to negotiate a compensation package. The second one, of course, would be to allow your Human Resources Department to conduct a search for this position. While this is not the norm, we stand by ready and able to do so, we would simply have to identify a strategy plan, vetting procedures, interview procedures, and how the commission would like to proceed in that manner, and then finally identify the timeline for it. And then, thirdly, of course, is the norm in which we would reach out to executive search firms. I have taken the liberty of calling out or reaching out to six firms so far, just to see what average cost would be, they came in anywhere between $23,500 and $42,500, some with expenses and travel included, or in addition to. There were a couple firms that were just unable to take on the work at this time, simply because of the workload and capacity that they already have. I also asked for timelines about when they'd be able to start the work, and some of them were able to start right away, others in about a month's time, simply, once again, because of the workload they already have. And then, the timeline in terms of completion of the work or identifying candidates, it ranged anywhere from 90 days to 112 days, which is roughly 16 weeks. So if the commission would like to give a little direction, we can proceed with whichever selection you would like.
All right, anyone have any thoughts? No thoughts. What's that, Commissioner Herbst?
Yes, I do, and I had brought this up before, I will reiterate it, I would like to see us utilize the same process we used after our former city, Harry Stewart, left many years ago. We had a committee comprised of some of the senior legal folks in our community that served as an evaluation committee. I think that was an outstanding process, I would strongly recommend we consider doing that again, there are a number of folks that I would highly recommend could participate with this, but they're able to evaluate the qualifications, the credentials of people that might be interested in applying for the position. The search firm might be a good method for doing the first culling of candidates, but then again, this local committee of individuals from the community, I think would be the best method I can think of to evaluate who would be our best city attorney going forward.
All right, Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, you have any thoughts?
Commissioner Herbst, I'm understanding you basically to say, consider a search and then utilizing a committee of local--
That's correct, so the search, so the search firm could publish, advertise, gather resumes, vet those resumes against pre-established criteria for experience, credentialing, do background searches, things of that nature, and then bring forth a list of, you know, five to 10, whatever that number may be, back to our local evaluation committee, then to finalize a recommendation of three.
Okay, adding to that, in our search, I'm suggesting that we do a national search. I'm not recommending that we do in-house search, but the recommendation that Commissioner Herbst has stated, I am in agreement with that.
So, so you're saying hire a search firm, have the search firm bring, advertise it nationwide, bring together a list of names, which would then be given to an advisory board that we would establish, that advisory board would bring forth, say, three or four of the best candidates, we would then interview those candidates, and then the commission would make the final decision, is that kind of what we're saying? That's what we did last time?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Commissioner Glassman, do you have any thoughts?
No, no further comment, thanks.
Okay, and Vice Mayor?
My original thought was doing it through HR, but I'm surprised, I didn't realize that the national firms were so reasonably priced, relatively speaking, so would they, would those firms rank the applicants for us before we, they even present them to us? How would that go?
They can, if we ask them to, typically, they'll just provide a pool of candidates for the commissioners to select from, or advisory board if you so choose.
Okay, fine. Any further comments? The only thing is, Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, when you say a national search, I'm very, I'm a little hesitant to say we should search nationally, I wouldn't want a city attorney from Washington State to think that they understand the law of Florida or the law of Fort Lauderdale. You know, we need to, I think we should narrow our focus to those that understand the issues already in Broward County or Fort Lauderdale, people who are already connected to the community, people who are, who have some association with, because otherwise, the learning curve would take so much time, and before they have a full understanding of who we are in Fort Lauderdale and what Broward County is all about, or for that matter, how the state legislature works, getting someone from, you know, a far-flung area, someone from New York City who decides they want to retire to Fort Lauderdale and they want to be our city attorney, I just hesitate to think that they would be the most qualified. I guess, I guess the, I mean, I guess the advisory board could ultimately make that decision whether or not they're qualified, but I'm just saying, I think it's putting a burden on that committee to think that they would best be able to sift through, you know, so many of the names that the, that the search committee would reach out for, so just a suggestion.
Would that be Florida-specific, or simply South Florida-specific?
Yeah, I think--
Or Broward-specific, I'm just kind of curious.
I think it should be South Florida-specific, you know, Broward, again, I don't know how many available candidates there are, you know, in Broward alone, so I would say South Florida-specific, because I think that knowing the state of Florida, knowing South Florida, and having some familiarity with the context of Fort Lauderdale would be really, really helpful, so that they can hit the ground running, because as you know, and as Mr. Spence realized, now taking on this temporary role, there's a lot of responsibility and a lot of things that have to be done, and, and, you know, to bring in somebody, you know, a fresh face from across the nation, I just think is expecting a lot, and I don't want to hold back on a lot of the projects that we've got going, simply because, you know, they're, they're being considered for the, for the role. So, but, you know, if we want to do that process, you know, the, the search firm and the advisory board will give us a little time to pick that advisory board, maybe at the next meeting, we could come up with some names, how many people do you want on that advisory board? One from each member of this commission, two from each--
Yeah, I think, I think five would work just fine.
Five should work sufficiently, okay.
And I think your idea about Florida law probably makes the most sense, because you want somebody that understands, to your, to your point, we want somebody who understands Florida statute.
Right.
You know, I wouldn't necessarily keep it South Florida-specific, maybe I'm being parochial with this, but I came down from Jacksonville, I wouldn't want to preclude somebody who works in some other part of the state, be it, you know, Orlando, or Tallahassee, or Tampa, from being able to compete for the position. I don't think we need to be, you know, quite that, quite that specific of only looking to our neighboring cities for talent, I think there's talent throughout the state, and I'd like us to, at least to afford ourselves the opportunity to attract the most qualified candidates we can, given your caveat of at least being specific with Florida law, and maybe have relationships, actually, with some of the folks in Tallahassee, that could be beneficial to us when we go hat in hand, asking for assistance on some of the issues that we're trying to deal with.
All right, so--
But with that being said, I don't want us to, I guess we need to figure out how we could actually vet this and make it happen. We know that we are now in a, a society where people move about a lot, someone may be in Washington that was originally here in South Florida, and we don't want to limit that opportunity--
So licensed to practice in Florida, maybe?
Yes, exactly. So figure out the wording, you know, so we can figure out how we could make this the best opportunity for our city. I would hate to see us limited the opportunity with a definition of because someone now lives in a different state, but they are familiar with--
Do we want somebody who's actually practiced as a city attorney, whether in-house counsel or as, you know, outside counsel? So for example, there are a lot of firms that serve as the city attorneys, even though they're external to the city, on a contract-for-hire basis, so would that, again, I'm just trying to think of what criteria we're looking for, if you're going to begin to conduct that search, or do we do that at a later time? Jerome, what's your thought?
Yes.
If I can before Jerome answers. There is a job description in place at this point, correct? Is that part of the job description?
Yes, the, the job description would be used to, to build the profile for the position for posting, yes. If I may, Mr. Spence might be able to provide some advice, but I believe that the candidate, or the successful candidate, would be required to be licensed to, to practice--
They have to be a member of the Florida bar.
Yeah, that's correct.
So if they do live out of state, they'd have to be a member of the Florida bar.
Understood.
Okay.
And for further guidance, then, we can provide the commission with formal written proposals from the firms that I have contacted, or you could choose to have them come in and give presentations, however you'd like to proceed, we'll, we'll take care of it.
That's on the, to determine who the search committee should be, who the search firm should be?
The search firm would be, right.
Yeah. All right, well, what's your recommendation? I, I think we should perhaps interview three?
Okay, I have two firms already supplied written proposals, formal proposals, I can reach out to the others and, and ask for their proposals as well, we can select three from the staff members to, to put in front of you, if you like.
If you could.
Sure.
And then bring that to the commission.
Okay.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Any further, any further business?
Yes, I had a, an update on Inter Miami Lockhart Park.
Okay.
So I just want to do a brief recap, just for the public and also for the members, new members of the commission. In 2019, city approved a comprehensive agreement to build a new stadium with Inter Miami, it also included an adjacent park. I also wanted to say that there was an obligation for the city to perform demolition work and also leave the site ready for development. However, Inter Miami was authorized to achieve that demolition work, and also, the city manager at the time committed to reimbursing Inter Miami at a later point. Concurrently, city also authorized a task order for an architect to design a, the park that is south of the stadium, that was described within the comprehensive agreement, there were various iterations between 2019 and 2022 of how this park may look like, the district commissioner was very involved in that process as well. On July 5th, 2022, because there wasn't a final design reached, and also the, the timeline of when the park needed to be built, in, on July 5th, 2022, the city commission approved an addendum to, to extend the period of construction for that park by one year. On that meeting, certain members of the commission also requested for staff to meet with the school board to determine what additional improvements can be asked for Inter Miami to complete. There were a series of meetings between staff and school board members and other stakeholders as well, where additional requests included increased rent fee usage of the North Field, additional seating for 3,000 fans, press box, sound system. Commission also requested for the mayor to meet with Inter Miami to finalize-- to finalize a project schedule of construction and also to finalize these additional requests as well. Due to scheduling conflicts and availability of Inter Miami, as they were heavily involved in the World Cup, they weren't able to meet until this month, and they did meet with the mayor. They also stressed the importance of completing the park. And as they finalized their plans, they also would like to meet with the district commissioner. As he mentioned, there is a meeting set for next week. I also want to mention that the Inter Miami had a temporary parking permit. This is separate from the comprehensive agreement that I just described. This temporary parking permit allowed them to use the South Lot where the park would be built, and the FAU Lot. And in, in 2022, $182,000 were collected in parking fees for the South Lot. $87,000 were collected for the FAU parcel. So those are some updates of where we are at with Inter Miami. We look forward to finalizing discussions next week. I will be attending the meeting with Commissioner Herbst as he's requested. And we, we look forward to bringing back a path to how soon this park can be achieved.
Okay. So Mayor, if I can kind of jump in on that. So thank you, Greg, for, for teeing that up. What I would like to ask my colleagues is, this is the signature park in my district. This is equivalent to Carter Park, it's equivalent to Holiday Park, it's equivalent to Snyder Park. And I would like to take the lead on negotiating. I appreciate the efforts that you've had, Mayor, but I think with, with myself in place, I would think this is very appropriate for my district to take the lead on negotiating what the park looks like that's going to serve my constituents. I intend to wrap this up as quickly as possible. There are many reasons why the project has not gotten done. I think there is enough, I'll use the word loosely, blame on both sides. There was no sense of urgency to get it done. I had that sense of urgency. I want to move forward with this project. I want to sit down with Inter Miami, lay out with them the things that I think are what the community expects. We're going to finalize a design with AECOM and move forward. And I'd like the ability to be able to get that done. And I'm asking my colleagues to appoint me as the point person for concluding those negotiations. Again, as this is my signature park in my district.
Well, I don't think, I mean, I, I'm happy to, you know, hand the reins over to you, but, but I don't really think I was even appointed to make, you know, to conclude negotiations. It was really to just bring options to the commission and as, as part of discussions that we had. And just so that, you know, in full disclosure, over the last year or so, much of the discussion had been not so much pointing fingers as to why things weren't getting done, but, but there were opportunities that were being presented to the city that, that, that seemed appealing, that we could incorporate on those, those 20 acres. In addition to a park, there was talk about, you know, incorporating women's soccer, bringing a franchise to the city of Fort Lauderdale. There's talking about bringing a tennis academy with a, with a particular tennis pro that everybody knows that wanted to come to Fort Lauderdale. There was also discussion about, you know, money that the city owes. The city still owes Inter Miami money for the demolition. And so we've been negotiating back and forth, and that's, and those negotiations are not concluded. So that's something that you could pick up on.
Sure.
You know, what we, what we owe them for the, for the demolition.
Well, as well as the 1.5 million they owe us for the building permits that they haven't feed. So there's a lot of things going
There's a lot of those issues, they, that's what delayed some of this. I think everybody went into it with the best intentions. I don't think there was anything sinister about this.
Again, no finger pointing on my part, it hasn't moved forward.
It has not moved forward.
And I want to move it forward. We are past our deadline, we're well past our deadline for completion of the park, and we don't have a design or a shovel in the ground, so
Well, we do have a design.
No, we don't. Actually, we don't have an approved design. I asked staff on this, and the answer is, we do not yet have an approved design.
We don't have an approved design, you're correct. But attached to the comprehensive agreement was a design that they proposed, and, and that has been changed because your predecessor
Exactly, again, not pointing fingers.
No, 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 no.
But I'm saying the design of the intent
Let me, let me, let me finish.
But that's not the last design. We have, we have a design that was proposed subsequent to the one that was in the agreement.
Correct.
So it's, it's a moving target. My goal is to pin that thing to the ground, so we no longer have a moving target. And then all the parties involved can work on getting this executed so that we could all sit there. The first thing I want to do is have us all there with our gold helmets on, throwing a shovel full of dirt. And then I want us coming back within 12 months and cutting a ribbon.
Okay, and what I was going to say was that, in working with Commissioner Maritas, we had come up, we had refined those plans, and we had come up with some options for the, for the design of that, of those 20 acres. And then she decided to resign, so that kind of got put on hold, even though we were all working towards a redesign in trying to fulfill the, the, the needs and the goals of, of the District One community. So, having said that, I think that, you know, you're taking over the, the discussion is perfectly, I'm happy to, that, to have you do that.
Thank you.
And you're, you know, you're, you're closer to, to your constituents than anyone else on this commission. And, and so we look forward to whatever result you can achieve there. So, so when is your meeting, next week, you said?
We are starting with our first meeting on Tuesday. And again, it is my intent to move this forward with absolute haste. So done, done is better than perfect. We will have a project done as quickly as, as is, as is feasible. That's my goal, to deliver for the community, working in conjunction with our partners with Inter Miami to get something that works for them, that works for the community, and, and we can begin to have kids out there playing in the park.
Very good.
Thank you.
Is there anything further?
Oh, what, a couple more things? One second, Commissioner, I mean, but Mayor. So just wanted to let you know that HR met with the Civil Service Board this past Friday, and they approved President's Day as a city holiday. So we are going to come forward on February 7th for an approval for President's Day. AD and CPR training, in lieu of the tragedy that many witnessed on national level for a televised football game. Just want to say that Chief Fraser has offered hands-only CPR training class throughout the city. And we are working with various departments to make that happen. If there are any HOAs or communities that would like to make use of the service, they can certainly reach out to our fire rescue department. We have that service available free of charge. And also, there's a potential commission meeting date change. So some of you have advised that you would like to participate in Broward Days, right, in Tallahassee this year, which takes place between March 21st and 22nd. So if that is the case, we would like to know if it is your preference, if you would like to participate and to have quorum, if you would like to move the March 21st meeting to Thursday, March 23rd.
Or the 28th, the following week, would be better.
But then that's really close. When's the first meeting in April?
The 4th.
That's only six days before the April meeting. That's kind of close. When do we meet? We meet Wednes, we meet March 8th this, this year?
March 7th and March
No, we meet the 8th.
I'm sorry?
We moved that to the 8th.
Moved to the 8th, correct.
You mean, March 8th and March 21?
Yeah. Why did they move it to the 8th?
Huh? I think there was some travel arrangements, they like Broward Days or something.
Oh, right, okay.
March 8th and March 21. That's the old day. We moved it for travel, like Broward Days.
So that's fine. I mean, moving into the 23rd is fine.
How many people are going?
I wasn't planning to go. Commissioner Beasley Pittman, were you going to go?
Yes, I desire to, yes.
Commissioner Herbst, were you going to go?
I was planning on attending.
Okay.
That's Tallahassee, right?
Yeah.
Now, there was a trip to DC, I think, a week later, a week or two after that, that, is that right?
What's, what's the trip to DC?
National League of Cities?
Something that
I don't know, there's, there is something coming up. I, I know what Commissioner Sermon is referring to. I don't know what it is, but there's, but there's something immediately following Broward Days. I don't recall what it is.
And Ms. Daphne Seanville, she can help answering that question.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Daphne Seanville, Government Affairs Manager. National League of Cities is scheduled for March 24th to the 28th. So that also, I believe, conflicts with moving it to the, the 28th, if you plan on participating in Capitol Hill Day.
So how many people are going to the National League of Cities?
You were thinking of going?
Right.
Okay. I was not thinking of going, so
That's the 24th to the 28th?
Correct.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman, were you thinking of going?
This is the first I've heard of it. I would love to.
I think you should connect with the commissioner and give her the details on that.
And Broward Days was what, I'm sorry, the 20?
21.
21 and 22?
I will resend an email that I did send with some Florida League of Cities, National League of Cities, and the Broward Days schedules. They've been moving targets, but I will send a full calendar with what has been scheduled for this upcoming year.
Broward Days is March 21 and 22.
March, right, and the National League of Cities is the 24th, which means
Through the 28th.
Right, which, if you go the first day, you want to really get there on the 23rd, the night before. The first day is usually the opening session, the plenary session, and when they have most of their meetings.
Can we meet on Monday, the 20th here, instead of the 21st or 22nd?
No.
No?
I can't do that.
So we can't meet on the 21 or 22nd?
Well, if you miss the first day of the League of Cities, I mean, you can get there that night. Where is it at?
Washington DC.
Oh, so it's just a quick trip. So you can leave Friday morning?
There are staggering dates in March. So the 24th and 25th, I believe, they have workshops, extracurricular excursions, for seminars for new commissioners or first-time attendees. And then the general session starts, I believe it's either the 26th or the 27th of March.
Okay. So Vice Mayor, if you left Friday the 24th of the morning, you know, you'll get, you'll basically be there for most of that day. It's just a two-hour plane trip. So, but getting, so we could have it on the 23rd, then? We could have our meeting on the 23rd, does that make sense to everybody?
I think you'll have to cancel your appearance at the Central Beach Alliance that night.
Will I be forgiven? Thank you. So shall we schedule it for the 23rd, then?
Yeah. So 24th, we, 24th we leave to go out there on the 24th?
You may. There are those pre-workshops before the actual general session.
And the general session starts when?
I believe it's either the 26th or the 27th, but I, I believe it's going to be the 26th this year.
So that's a Sunday?
Correct.
Sunday and Monday, and we come back on the Tuesday.
The Tuesday is Capitol Hill Day, so that's when we would walk the Capitol to do advocacy with our delegation and other agency meetings. So it would be the 26th to the 28th, if you were really going to go for the substantive portions.
The 23rd should be fine, then, right?
What's that?
The 23rd should be fine.
Yeah. So isn't, isn't the 23th basically a travel back day, though?
That was going to be
Right, if you're up there all day, the 21st and the 22nd. I believe there's also some, some events on the 23rd, aren't there? When you and I were chatting about that, I thought there was an opportunity to connect with some of the individuals in Tallahassee on the 23rd.
If you wanted to stay an extra day, we can schedule some meetings for you.
I mean, it's, it's a long trip up there, so, I mean, I, I hate to make the trip up there and not get the value out of being there.
Well, isn't, isn't Broward Days just one day?
It's the 22nd, so they have an event. They don't, they haven't released the official agenda, but generally, the 21st is the, the dinner reception, the meet and greet with our delegation, with other sponsors. And the 22nd is when you meet and greet with all the representatives throughout the day.
And then the 23rd would be the travel day back.
So I don't know when we're going to do this.
So I don't know what the flight schedules are, but if you came back in the morning, we could start our meeting at 1:30.
Which day?
The 23rd.
It seems like it's the only day.
Yeah.
Sandwiched in between Broward Days and the League. Later than that, it's, I don't think we should meet just five or six days before the next meeting.
Given a choice, I would skip it altogether rather than doing it on the 23rd.
I'm sorry?
I said, given a choice, I would skip Broward Days altogether rather than doing it on the 23rd. So I would rather pass on the opportunity than do it on the 23rd, so. If, if we can't do it another day, then I would just say, I personally will skip it.
Okay. All right, so the 23rd, then? You're okay with that, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we'll reschedule for March 23rd.
So we're going from the 21st to the 23rd?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We will schedule that, then.
To the 23rd.
Those conclude
Anything further?
I just need to say a shout out to my staff, they already have it on my calendar. Wow, very nice. Erica and Ashley, you're amazing.
Mister, Mister City
Look at that.
Mister City Attorney, do you have any report today?
No, sir, but we do have our closed-door session that will commence at 4:30, so
Can we do that early, or do we have to do it at 4:30?
We'd have to do that at 4:30, because we have a court reporter that needs to be present, so if
They not here now?
No, so if you wanted to take a break at this meeting, reconvene the meeting, because we have to announce that session at a meeting.
All right, so I will, we'll take a 30-minute recess of the conference meeting and return here at 4:30.
resume our conference meeting, and at this time the City Commission shall meet privately to conduct discussions between the city manager, the city attorney, and the city commission relative to pending litigation. Pursuant to section two eight six dot zero one one, prens eight Florida statutes in connection with the following matter. Fort Lauderdale food not bombs at all versus city of Fort Lauderdale case number fifteen dash six oh one eight five. Present at the attorney client session will be myself, vice mayor Warren Sterman, commissioner John C. Herbst, commissioner Stephen Glassman, and commissioner Pam Beasley Pittman, city manager Greg Cheveria, interim city attorney Duane M. Spence, outside counsel Michael T. Burke, and certified court reporter from Bailey Enton Court Reporting. Good evening, good afternoon. Thank you for being here. The estimated length of this attorney client session is approximately twenty minutes. Mr. City Attorney.
We still talk about food not bombs?
Yeah. That started what ten years ago? I remember what was her name Haley sitting there yelling at me.